Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the West Alice, West Milwaukee School Board to order. Please, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Curran, would you please lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzette, would you please, excuse me, please call the roll?
Yes. Mrs. Sue Jackie.
Here.
Ms. Curran.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Yustra.
Here.
Mrs. Justin.
Here.
Ms. Emmens.
Here.
Mr. Keller.
Here.
President, second.
Present. Proper notice of this meeting has been enforced according to the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Any additions or modifications to tonight's agendas by Dr. Lexman or by board members?
I'd ask that we separate 9.2, the employment summary, for a board member to be recused.
Okay. Board members, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no public comments, is what I'm seeing from Brian. So we will move right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Lexman.
Great, thank you. So 7.1 is a report from our West Alice Central High School student representative. So introduce yourselves to the panel again and share your report with us.
All right. Hello, I'm Ms. Euphren's Junior.
And I'm Lishi Dalvi.
And we're here to talk about some of the things that are happening at Central. On Wednesday, November 29th, Central held its annual college and career readiness fair. Representatives from over thirty different career fields came to present to our students about their professions. In addition, twenty-seven universities came to meet with their students and answer questions about the enrollment, tuition, scholarships, and provide information about their campuses. A special shout-out to the Central Student Services who organized this great event.
The Interact, the French, German, and Spanish Honor Society organized a toy drive for the kids-to-kids Christmas event at the Village of Manor Park. This event was a huge success. Over a hundred and eighty toys were donated for this drive. These gifts are bringing cheer to the lives of many children in the West Alice community.
On Saturday, the West Alice Central Band, directed by Mr. Buck, added some holiday cheer to the West Alice Christmas parade. Students from the Siphonic Band at Wind Symphony combined to put on a great show for the crowd. They were able to put in front of hundreds of people because of this annual event.
Ms. Nigan held her fourth annual AP Ling book discussion Monday night at Central. Approximately two-hundred people were in attendance. On the night of this event, the students and their book buddies got their groups to discuss the book that they wrote. Students who use this insight they gained from these discussions to help with a summer worth paper that they will be writing.
On Thursday, thirteen freshman students went to West Milwaukee and Flintwood Wright intermediate schools to talk to eighth graders about their transition into high school. The eighth graders had tons of great questions about high school expectations. Our students covered topics about their coursework, classroom expectations, homework, school activities like homecoming, extracurriculars, what lunch is like, and how to survive the first week of high school. These freshmen addressed both the students and staff at the intermediate schools and were asked to come back again to speak again in the future.
Ms. Wolf and the yearbook staff organized senior photos for students who are unable to get their pictures taken before the deadline due to money or contracts. Ms. Wolf and Junior Alexia Rodriguez, the head yearbook photographer, set up a minimum photography studio in the library utilizing curtains from the auditorium commons and the lights donated by Ms. Kralik. They also took photos amongst the books in the stairwell for students who wanted to do different kind of poses. Thanks to the hard work of these two seniors, who otherwise wouldn't have had a picture, there were the photos in the yearbook and had a hard copy for their families.
On Saturday, students from West Alice Central went to volunteer at Target Island. The senior family selected children from our district, sixty dollars each, to spend on toys, clothes, or other things they might want slash need. It's a super busy time and the kids left the store super excited with the things that they chose. Even the basketball team, soccer team, even the honor society members of the National Honor Society were there to give support.
And now we're going to be talking about the Bulldog Athletics. The Bulldog Varsity Wrestling Team started out their conference season strong when they defeated the New Berlin Combined Wrestling Team on December 7th and they won forty to thirty-five. The Bulldogs have five pins which helped push them to the dual win. Varsity is one to zero winning with their first winning conference title at the New Berlin Combine. This weekend, the Varsity Wrestlers host the annual EH Stretch Wrestling Invitational on Friday and Saturday.
Junior Bulldog Saturdays has started. Bulldog's coach Dave Muraznik and girls' coach Christine Hanson, along with their staff and current Bulldog players, are running fun to mental Saturdays from eight-thirty to ten-thirty a.m. This is for the all students from grades second through eighth. The junior Bulldogs are being brought in different types of games and interact with our coaches and players. Dates for this can be found on our sports website.
The Varsity Girls Basketball Team is off to a three-to-three record. They defeated Greendale in Western Conference action by a score of fifty-one to forty-seven in overtime. This one snapped a thirty-nine game conference losing streak dating back to January sixteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
The Varsity Girls Basketball Team is off to a good start on the young season. They currently have three down with a big conference game on Tuesday night, which also is their first home game of the season. They host a Western Conference leader, Milwaukee.
Central Athletics currently have a calendar raffle fundraiser going on. There will be a drawing for cash parties at all Friday night basketball games starting January nineteenth and ending February twenty-third. Help support your Bulldog Athletic Teams by purchasing a ten-dollar ticket from any team member at our athletic director's office at Central.
And now we're going to talk about some upcoming events that are happening at Central. Are You Smarter Than a Teacher Live will take place on Wednesday, December twenty-first. Teachers will go head-to-head with their students to see who is really the smartest.
Avid Nine Selection is currently taking place. We're looking for thirty candidates to be a part of the cohort.
And then we're talking about the CAPDOR decorating contest, which is going to end and judge on twenty-first of December.
And then it's almost January, which means exams are coming up. Students are already studying for their upcoming exams so that they can close out their semester on a high note.
Central will hold its first annual Bulldog National Expo on January nineteenth. Grade readers from West Milwaukee and Flintwood Wright will come to our school and learn more about our athletic programs, academics, and clubs.
Finally, on January twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, Central will be having Test Fest. All ninth, tenth, and eleventh grader students at Central will be taking the practice ACT test. Seniors will have the opportunity to take either the ASVAB, UW placement, Accuplacer, or the practice ACT. At the end of the test, students will have the chance to review their answers with the proctor of the test.
Any last words?
Any questions, comments by board members? I have one quick question. When you talked about Are You Smarter Than a Teacher, I think you said Wednesday, the twenty-first?
Uh...
I think Wednesday's the twentieth and Thursday's the twenty-first.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
One hundred and twenty.
Yeah, that's on Wednesday, the twenty.
Yes.
Thank you.
For sure.
And is that open to public or is that just your activity for the daytime?
Yeah, just nights away from the morning.
Yeah.
I mean, if you want to come, you could.
Well, thank you for sharing that information with us. And as always, you are free to go home and study whatever your plans are.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful Christmas. We're all here to enjoy a job. Great job.
So we'll go on to seven point two, the school showcase. Nice, the school showcase, so it happens to be West Alice Central High School. So it's going to be all West Alice tonight. So we'll have the team from West Alice come on up.
So first of all, I want to thank all the teachers that have done such incredible work this year in such a short time. And what I wanted to do was make sure that they had an opportunity to give you an idea of what they're doing, how hard they're working. And I just want to say that I'm really, really proud of all of them and they've done a wonderful job. And so we're just going to get started and do that.
Our first person up is Mr. Mente and Mr. Curran.
So I'll start. The first thing in tech ed that I wanted to showcase a little bit was State Representative Daniel Remer visited our tech ed area to kind of see what was going on in schools. He said he felt a disconnect between his constituents and what kids are actually doing in school. And so he wanted to kind of come see what some of the cool things we were doing and including Project Lead the Way. It took him through a little bit of woods as well, as you can see there. But that was a great visit. Kids did a great job of showing what they're learning as far as their robotics and their CNC programming and stuff to that point as well. I'm also doing robotics again this year as one of the robotics coaches, so that's just starting to kick into gear. Season usually starts right after Christmas break, beginning of January is when they announce the program and what we have to do to accomplish. So that's, we're kind of preparing for that. And as well as I'm taking over Skills USA this year. And we have a record number of kids in that that we got signed up for. So that's starting out well too. And we'll start getting kids ready for our competitions there, so.
Good evening. I want to expand on tech ed a little bit on my part-time job of being at school all night, working on kind of upgrading some of our tech ed programs. It's been, it's been a long time since a lot of our stuff has been upgraded. Our wood shop hasn't been upgraded since nineteen seventy-three. And now we have a big new partner in the district moving in. I'm sure a lot of you have seen on feature, new building being built across from like the city yard. Glenn Reader is moving in. It's a gigantic company. They do super high-end millwork, cabinets, and furniture for Mark Edexstein Hall. They've done locally. They have a separate branch over in Las Vegas in California. But they're looking at hiring between fifty and a hundred people from what I've talked with their floor production manager. And upgrading woods is going to be a big priority, you know, because they want to hire our kids. And they're also willing to help us out in ways as they upgrade things if there's things that are useful to us that they have, they said they want to work with us that way. In addition to youth apprenticeship students as well that they want to hire. We have some youth apprenticeship students out this year in a couple of different areas and some different related construction fields. But just kind of starting off in that we haven't done that in a long time as far as having kids in construction-related areas. And it's a huge need, it's a huge demand area, so we want to get more students involved in that. We've had a lot for auto and we continue to have a lot for auto that are involved because of the need there as well. And auto is growing, so this year I'm teaching auto and woods. And yet in auto, we continue to grow. We had a new lift this year and auto replaced one that was about ten years old and is actually having some fault and issues with it, needed to be repaired. But it wound up not being worth it with what we could get a new one for. It's new cabinets in there. We also got a two-thousand-dollar tool donation from the Auto Dealers Association of Mega Milwaukee. It's last year. So we were able to get a lot of hand tools replaced and upgraded, some new technology items that way. And, but mostly hand tools that needed to be added, a lot of metric stuff, things that just weren't there originally. So that's been really nice. New equipment in woods, panel saw, spindle sander, pocket screw machine, joiner heads. We had the original joiner in there, the original head in there since nineteen seventy-three. And now upgrading that machinery is going to be safer, it's going to be better for the kids. We're also looking at putting in two new saws, probably in the next year or so, that actually have safety capability built into them so that if a student's finger would touch that saw blade, it breaks, it has a break involved that it clamps that saw blade and it leaves you with a Band-Aid-sized wound instead of a hospital-grade sized wound. So helps keep our kids safe, also drops our insurance premium. So it's good from all aspects that way. Also looking at doing a fab lab. Glenn wrote a really great grant for that, I think, two years in a row. We didn't get it, it's very competitive. But we're trying to look at ways we can implement that in a small space, just to kind of get it up and going, mostly to be able to support robotics. Robotics doesn't have their own space. And right now they're working in our graphics lab and it doesn't really give them an opportunity to lock their things up and have what they need for a facility. So we're looking at trying to work with what we have there to be able to give them some space, especially since, you know, they did such a great job, two years, you know, they've been up and running, first year they went to nationals, so we'd really like to be able to support them better, so. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the fab lab.
Yeah.
Because every school board magazine I get has articles about fab labs and how important they are. So what is your vision of a fab lab?
The fab lab that we're looking at undertaking is basically taking out part of a storage room that we right now share. I have my small engines in there. We share with the set building for the play. And basically, I'm going to move some of my engines to the basement and work with those in a creative way so that we can build a small space that they can have some workbenches, they can have grinders and cutting tools. Metal, some small metalworking equipment that they can use for the aluminum framework that they need. Biggest is just a place to be able to lay out their stuff and have some locked storage for their tools and help them to be more organized. It's kind of a start. It will need, I mean, it's going to need some power in there. There's not much for, you know, electrical outlets in there. You could probably use some air power, which we've already got air rundown there, it's just a matter of piping it across the hallway. But yeah, it would be great long-term to be able to get one of those grants and expand it. This would give us a head start. And it's right in the tech ed area. So it's nice that it's able to be transitioned to easily if, say, Mr. Mente was in woods, you could transition across the hall with a kid that needed to get in there and need to be able to get access to that room.
Does that connect with Project Lead the Way?
In general, no, it does not. We encourage all our Project Lead the Way kids to join, of course, but as far as some of the skills that they learn in Project Lead the Way, yes, there's a lot of skills that transfer as far as robotics and programming, coding, and, you know, building, you know, just basic robots and handshaking them and things like that together where, so they do learn a lot of the skills in Project Lead the Way, yes. But are they directly related? No.
What kind of dollar amount are you talking about with the grants you're writing and what financial support is needed to get the fab lab running?
So the grants that Glenn had written, I believe there's all different ones, but they range anywhere from fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. So obviously, they're pretty big packets, you know, that they're writing for. And since this is, just like you said, you know, the front page cover and all these Wisconsin technical journals and stuff that come out for technology, it's the new buzzword in tech ed. It's very competitive, it's what everybody's after. And the other thing is too, you don't have to have, in many cases, expansive facilities to be able to do this. So what we are looking at is maybe one welding booth in there, as opposed to, the original idea back in the day was having a whole welding lab, which was a gargantuan undertaking. This would be maybe one welding booth that would need to be wired for. Has self-contained fume extraction, maybe a grinder and a couple of things, a few pieces of equipment, like an expansive home shop, basically, and more bench space for kids to be able to do some, I don't know, some light duty, metal-type working, but certainly not to the extent of what we're able to do over at Hale in the metals facility over there. As far as dollar amount, I would say we'd probably be in the equipment range of ten thousand dollars would be a lot, you know, for what we need to be able to put together there. And a lot of that stuff we have already. A big part's going to be being able to coordinate with the district to be able to get in some of the utility type things. Being able to power it, run the air, things like that, lighting, making sure that that's going to be okay for us for fire and code and everything else that way as well. So a lot of it's, you know, Steve Rowdy's going to have to make sure that that's okay with him and that he's able to support us that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our Avid team.
I'm Therese Wright and I'm one of the Avid teachers. I currently teach the Avid twelve class.
I'm Renee Nigan and I currently teach the Avid eleven class. So we just wanted to review a little bit about what Avid is. Avid is a college preparation program. It's actually a class that students take. And the mission of Avid is to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society. The aim is to really focus on those kids in the middle who maybe need a little boost and some help to get them on their way so that they are prepared for any college or career program that they would like to apply to. Currently, we have four years, or actually three and a half years of Avid. We are, we've had Avid for eight years and three years ago, we started incorporating the freshmen. In the past, students applied at the end of their freshman year for sophomore, junior, senior year. We now have them apply at this time. In fact, we just had our meeting last week for the potential freshmen who will be joining us and so we begin second semester. We had identified a hundred and thirty current freshmen at Central who meet the parameters for Avid. So this is, we look at MAPS scores, we look at their current grades, and then we look very heavily at teacher recommendations. So students who are interested, this is a program for kids who are interested in being in the program, it's not something that like mom's got to force you to be into or your teacher said you have to be into. We really are looking for that individual determination because Avid stands for advancement via individual determination. So we're looking for kids who are interested in being in the program. And so we had a lot of interest. A hundred and thirty students were invited to the meeting. I believe about a hundred and twenty of them showed up to our meeting that we had during our CAPA program. We were supported by the Student Services, they helped us to man that. And we had a very large panel of current Avid tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders who were very happy to explain to students what the program entails. Ms. Nigan's going to talk a little bit about the curriculum.
For the curriculum, it changes for Avid nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. And the goal is, is to move up the students in their college readiness skills. So starting at nine and ten, the students go through and look at organizational skills and as far as their study skills, preparing for the ACT and what it will take to actually be successful in college. And then those skills build upon themselves. And then the focus in Avid eleven is both college exploration and also the ACT. So we look at both of those two things and the students are, they all have an idea of one college that they may want to go to, but the goal is for them to see that there are multiple options and also to see everything the UW system has in store for them as well. And then by the time that they reach Avid twelve, the goal is that they are prepared to start applying. And so with Therese, they worked through the FAFSA, they looked through going and applying to all of their schools and also applying for scholarships as well. So that's what the Avid curriculum looks like. And then throughout it as well, we offer, one other goal is for opportunities for them to go on to field trips and actually get to college campuses. Because maybe they don't know exactly what a college campus looks like. And so throughout the year, our goal is to get them to two college campuses. And that really hinges on all the Avid, all of the Avid teachers, we work together to contact those schools and get them to hopefully support us with buses and the money to get the students there. And then also, we work together as an Avid team with the Avid students to have bake sales so that we can pay for those expenses as well with the subs and to get them there and lunch and so forth.
Just one last thing, just looking at our more recent Avid graduates. So last year, we ended with twenty Avid seniors and nineteen of the twenty were accepted to at least one four-year college, many of the students to many, many colleges. The twentieth student was somebody who was choosing the military as a career and so he is also, I mean, he's currently in the military, so he had a plan. Our goal is that all these students are prepared for college. Some of them will opt for a technical program. We have one young man who is in Skills USA, like Mr. Mente was talking about, and is very excited about going into the automotive industry. But he has a plan and he's organized. And he has also been accepted to four-year colleges as well, but is, you know, making an educated decision of what he would like to do. So the goal is that these students are prepared for whatever they choose and keeping their options open. Currently, we are still in the process of applying, but fourteen of the current twenty-five Avid seniors have already been accepted to at least one college and nearly all of them have most of their applications in. So the next step is then working on those scholarships. So we have a plan for how do you pay for this. And then we continue to work on skills. What are those skills you're going to need in college to not just get there, because as we know, a lot of the issue is keeping kids there once they're there and having those skills to really stick with it.
Any questions for? So if I'm understanding right, the students go to your class every single day for forty-three minutes or whatever they have?
Correct. So this is an actual class that the students, so they're applying in their freshman year and they will start with Mr. Dolnick for the second semester freshman year and then continue with Ms. Garcia, tenth grade, Ms. Nigan, eleventh grade, and then me, twelfth grade. And so as Ms. Nigan said, it's, you know, we're going to continue a lot of the themes. You're going to hear a little bit more about some of the Avid school-wide and how we're broadening these skills across the school. But we focus on what's called WICER. So it stands for Writing, Inquiry, Collaboration, Organization, and Reading. So we're working on skills that the school's working on, but we're doing it in a more focused way.
Jeff, I think Heather, you had your handle.
Nope, you were first question.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Just a side note to the programs that are being presented, and automotive came up this evening. A person that I know that went to one of the high schools here in the district has now taken ownership of a mobile station off of Cleveland and he worked there for sixteen years, so he now owns that station. So he hung in there and stuck with it and I mentioned, you had mentioned sticking with it. Very important when you stick with it with employees, so.
Is that your station out there?
It is. And Mark Petrowski is the new owner of that station.
Good partner of mine, he did a class presentation there.
Fantastic. Good to see, good to hear. Thank you.
Can you just talk a little bit about binder checks and the tutorial? So my kids have both are in, have been or are in the program. It's a really, really fantastic program, but I don't, I think people don't really have an idea.
Right. And Ms. Justin has been very, very supportive. She has served as a chaperone on many of our trips and we really appreciate that. So Ms. Nigan talked about organization. So by organization, we're not just talking about just general skills. These are very, very precise. So for example, the students are required to take Cornell notes in all of their academic classes and then keep them in a binder. These notes, the purpose is, we're teaching them that you can go back and look at these notes, you can use these for study groups, you can, you have then a basis of what you're going to study later on. And so these, we have college tutors that come in every second Fri, they work with us twice a week, every week for tutoring, and then they work with us every second Friday to check these binders. And so the students are accountable for, so when we're saying you need these notes, they really are checked. And so what we're doing is raising the level of the expectations that when you take these notes in your other classes, they're for a purpose. They don't just get thrown in a backpack or at the bottom of your locker, they really need to be organized and placed somewhere. Because in life, you need, if, you know, if your boss asks you to take notes or to prepare a report, you need to follow through. And so we're really trying to work on a lot of those life skills by using some of these school skills. Today, my seniors were, I'll just throw in, our lesson today with the seniors was how to write a proper thank you letter. So they, one of the requirements was they had to obtain at least one letter of recommendation from a teacher or a community member to use for their college applications. And when I explained that you now need to thank these people, so I told them thank you, explained that sometimes it's nice to have something a little bit more formal and, you know, just kind of some of those life skills that we're just trying to really just promote some.
Didn't they have to write it with the hand?
For many of them, it'd be preferable if they typed it.
So much of what you're doing with Avid is academically structured.
Correct.
But it is an elective class. It is not counted for as English or...
Correct.
Whatever else. So is that a struggle for you to get kids to sign up if they're looking at their twenty-three point five, they want to take a formal license, they want to take music? How do you grab them?
Sometimes we will, I mean, it can be an issue, they do have to understand it, there will be some, we may have to do some wiggle, wiggling around. And so, yeah, that, there's a little bit less choice factor, but this, I'm not sure who, somebody at the administrative level has set it into our scheduling program now. So it gets scheduled, if a student is in Avid, it gets scheduled as if they were in like the math, the science, the English, and social studies so that it gets a priority so it doesn't get bumped for other classes. And then we try to work the other electives in. We have many students who are also in Project Lead the Way, many students who are in music and, you know, other areas. So they, these are students that are a real cross-section of our student population. And so we really try to work it out so that everything fits.
You have such a good academic base, I almost wish it could be something that could be counted, that's kind of my point with this.
We kind of work that as a singleton in the scheduling process so then that way, those students, it kind of comes as a priority because there might be, you know, an English class that's offered every hour so that there's a little more leeway. So we try to schedule them into those singletons and some of the electives first so that way they can still get those electives that they're requesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now I want to bring up a little bit about how Avid is going school-wide.
Okay, now we're going to bring up a little bit about how AVID is going school-wide.
Good evening, I'm Alex Garcia.
Thank you, Glenelsky.
All right. So as you just heard from Therese and Renee, the students that are in the AVID program benefit from being in the program. You saw the data from last year's graduating class of who went on to college. So one of the things we've been thinking about this year is how all of our students at Central can benefit from the riches of the AVID program. And so within the AVID program, one of the domains is instruction. So this we saw as an easy win as far as getting all teachers on board and what they can do to improve instruction in the classroom using AVID strategies. So some of the different focus groups we've created this year have been the Cornell Notes, the Philosophical Chairs Group, the Collaborative Study Groups, another group called Lenses. And then lastly, we have a fifth group called Word Walls and Sentence Stems. So all teachers in Central get to pick which focus group they want to be a part of and then, but this started at the beginning of the school year. So they were part of their initial focus group based on their own interests and they would learn about this specific AVID strategy. And all of these strategies are nothing, it's not any mind-blowing new teaching instructional strategy. These are based in research within the AVID program and what works for students. And so about a month ago, teachers had the option to switch different groups so they could get a taste of different strategies that they might want to use in their classroom. And so we've been working throughout the year and we will continue to work throughout the year in these focus groups. And teachers will have choice in which different strategies that they want to learn and participate in. It's great that we can learn together and from each other. So this year, I've led the Philosophical Chairs Group and through the past couple of months in this group, I've seen probably thirty to forty different teachers come through. And they're normally teachers that, since I'm in social studies and AVID, I get to see teachers like, that are in the tech ed program. So we get to collaborate in a different way too, which is great. And I think that with these groups, we bring samples of student work. So what's working in the classroom, what can we get better at? We take our ideas, we share them out, and then we bring back what we've learned and tried. And we bring samples, like I said, of these students, student evidence of work. And then we grow from there. So it's a really great way that all students in our school can get a taste of what's in the AVID program, not just the students that are in the AVID program.
So a couple of other pieces that are important to this. We've been working on this for a while and as Alex said, right now, the instructional groups are all led by educators in the building. This isn't Mr. Taylor, this isn't Ms. Yaklitz, this isn't myself. We really want to give some of that power to the educators in there. These are educators that have been to some institutes that have received training. So a special thanks goes to Deidra, Jeff Taylor, and as well as the former administration for helping support this work because without them, this wouldn't be where it's at right now. We're kind of at a point where we feel like these are things, we think it's good for this core group of students, we think it's good for all kids. And so right now, we're trying to get it into as many kids to get these different instructional strategies in front of them and not just a small group of kids. So that's why we're trying to push things more school-wide. Some of the ways that we're supporting that is through creating walkthroughs that specifically focus around WICER strategies and giving feedback on that. We've also included our site team plan and the certification system, coaching certification instrument that AVID uses. We've incorporated that to our school improvement plan. If you look at the back of the little Cornell note type sheet that we gave you guys, in the back of that, you'll see some of that, just not for now, but for later, just some of the work that we're doing in terms of the school improvement plan and a deeper dive into what are we doing with these instructional focuses at Central. Take a look at that. Our goal is really to talk about instruction in a way that we can all understand it so we have a common phrase, we have some common terminology and that we can support each other with that. And that's the work that the AVID team, the AVID site team, which is made up of about twelve educators and the rest of the building, we're trying to come together to move ourselves forward. So I'm going to let the next group kind of go because they've got some other things that are really great that's been going on at Central with the C four team.
Wait a minute, I just wanted to have a comment.
Yeah.
This is so important and the, I'm so glad that it's school-wide. And I will tell you that my first son, and I don't remember from social studies or science, but after he took his first test, which was not well-done, the teacher said, "Do you know how to take notes?" And he's, "Let me see your notes," of which Andy had no idea how to take notes. And, you know, so they built upon that. And I'm so glad to see that you're, a lot of smart kids don't know how to take notes. They don't have that skill. So I appreciate the fact that this is going school-wide.
And this is our first real year of really trying to push it school-wide. We're kind of at that point where it just makes sense. We've got the staff, we've got the know-how, we got the AVID elective down. Now it's time to reach more kids.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next section is going to be on our C four group and that's our College and Career Culture Committee. Mr. Dolnick and myself are going to kind of present on this one. I'll let you go ahead and start.
Sure. Hi, I'm Mr. Dolnick. Last year, after visiting a number of schools in the Wisconsin area, a collection of teachers got together to talk and reflect on what we saw. And one big talking point was the walls. And we said, "What are their walls saying and what are our walls saying?" And their walls were saying things like student achievement and college and career-ready and high standards. And comparatively, our walls were pretty bare and didn't say much. So after asking this question, we decided to form a group called the College and Career Culture Committee, or C four, with the goals in mind of changing that so that our walls actually said something about what we were trying. So what we came up with for goals were to come up with, as it says, clear and concise and attainable goals towards changing this climate at our school so that students and staff all shared this college and career-ready view that we had and to include student leaders in the discussions of this so that they could have a voice in the ways we would change our school.
So some of the things that we have done, and we've actually come up with a timeline and projecting out when our due dates are and trying to keep a status so it's keeping us on track ourselves. Things like the nameplates. Every teacher has a nameplate and on those nameplates actually tells stuff about them, like what colleges they went to, their interests, you know, maybe their favorite subjects, their favorite poems, whatever it would be that's about them. Kind of get the kids talking about where we went to school, how we got there, what our interests were. We've done, our graduation requirements are posted all over the building now. Before, it was like you had to go look in one specific spot. We're putting it out there now for the kids to know. The pennants, we have pennants from all the colleges. If you look down our second floor, it's pennants hanging all the way down the entire hallway. Looks really neat and the kids are, it's generating discussion, which is what's important for the kids. New banners just arrived in, in regards to our different trades that we're focusing on. The trade banners give everything from requirements that any schools to go to, how much you can make, you know? Those are the important things that kids want to know. If I'm going to do this, what am I going to make? So we're trying to put that out there for them because if we can get them excited in it, we can get them maybe excited in being in the classes and doing what they need to do to get there. So then we've also gone in and even looked at, we're cleaning up our building and, you know, labeling of where garbage cans are. And I know those sound like silly things, but when you really look down the hallway, you look at a college campus, so you look at some of those places to make it look more like that also helps bring about, about that pride and that respect for our building. And we have a lot of things with being in older building and we have a lot of things that are still being worked on and areas that are dug up and dug out and they're trying to fill and fix, you know? But the nice thing is if we can do some of those aesthetic-type things and make the kids proud of it, you know, kids that, when you ever see a painted wall, they don't graffiti over a painted wall. They graffiti on plain walls. There's no pride in it. They respect other people's work. They respect the work that's being done. So we're kind of going off of those things. We're also having the teachers that are wearing college gear and not like, get me wrong, I'm a Badger fan and I'm a Packer fan, but it's not Go Badgers, it's UW-Wisconsin. It's a UW-Green Bay. We are, we're promoting the different colleges that we went to so then that way the kids can ask us questions about them. So those are kind of some of the, the things.
Another thing that we're doing, we put a calendar in the cafeteria as well as a bulldog information zone that's going up because we want them to be college and career-ready, but we also want them to add to our culture at the school. So the calendar and the information zone is about club activities because many of our students just didn't know the clubs that we had available to them. Some of my AVID students last year asked me, "We have a debate team?" And I said, "Yeah." They were not aware that this was a thing. So on the nameplates, we also have the clubs, but in the information zone and on the calendar, we also have this because we want students to be more actively involved in our school as well.
Also important, this is our Hall of Academic Achievement. So we're starting out a hallway now to start showing attendance. One of our greatest issues as we know is our attendance. So let's celebrate those that are there, the amount of time that they're supposed to be there. So let's put that out there, let's put up our honor roll. We have a ton of kids that are doing fabulous. We need to promote that also and let those kids know that they're appreciated and also then have others aspire to get to that, you know, that level. Other things, we're putting up a Military Service Hall of Honor. One of the things that's left out is the amount of military that Central has produced. So we're going to have a section from each branch of the military with names put onto there for whoever from Central has gone and we're reaching out to those right now. Questions?
I just want to say, I really like this, this whole concept. I think really can provide that sense of pride in your school and to show like a goal. A lot of times, kids look at school as something they have to do every single day and they don't realize at the end of it, they're supposed to do something. And I think by having all these constant reminders, oh, there's jobs I'm supposed to be looking at, there's schools I should be looking into if I want to do that. And having that, those pennants, having those, those things up with the trade information on it and showing the military, all the different options that they have constantly in their face, I think is going to make people think about it, make the kids think about it and realize that this class that maybe they don't really want to do right now, it does have a point. It does have a reason that, to that end goal, whatever it might be. And having all those different options, I think that's, that's fantastic and I think it will go a long way in creating a great atmosphere at Central and, and that pride in your school. As you say, you know, you don't put the graffiti on the painted wall, you don't put the graffiti up, you put on the blank wall. When you have something there to look at, you don't need graffiti. You have something there to aspire to. I really, I really like that. I think that's going to go a long way. I'm excited to see, you know, how that affects the school moving forward.
And also, we're in the building a lot with junior bulldog activities and the juniors are seeing this stuff on the walls and they're commenting on it. When we were in for our football banquet, they saw the nameplates and they were all reading them, like, oh, this person went here. They're already talking about it and they're starting to understand that that's part of the culture and making them more excited about going to Central someday too. So this whole idea of family and building up, you know, top-down, I mean, it, it's starting to already have a trickle-down.
The biggest conversation that we're having with, with the seniors is, you know, what's your plan? You know, what are you, what are we doing? And so that's, that's a real common thing and it's to a point where they expect that and because I ask that question all the time and what can we do to help you reach your goal, but, you know, you have to have a plan and you have to be prepared for, for that next phase. And so, you know, I, I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. Okay? Who's next?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The transition program, these two young ladies are, have, just done phenomenal work and I think it's, you know, important to make sure the kids are prepared for high school. That's a really important thing and so we talked about that. I had no idea that these two would, would, would do these things, but I'm very proud of the work and so I'm really going to let them talk about that right now.
Hi, I'm Christina Kerlik. I'm the Instructional Technology Integrator. And I'm Angela Galoski. I'm a social studies teacher. So with the help and idea of Mr. Taylor, we came to him, asking him for an idea for a big project that we could do. And he said that he always saw a need for a high school transition program and this was something that we saw last year when a lot of our freshmen were really struggling with coming into high school and getting acclimated to our school culture. So Angela and I got together and we came up with some common goals about what a transition program would be like. And so one of the main things that we really want eighth graders coming into high school is to know what our school expectations are for them and we want their parents to understand those things as well. We also want them to feel connected to our high school. That's one thing that a lot of ninth graders say that they kind of lacked last year. So what we are doing is we are sending, setting them up with mentors that will guide them throughout the process of transitioning into high school next year. And we also will be working very hard at presenting opportunities that they have when they can enter Central, including the areas of academics, athletics, clubs, and extracurricular opportunities that they may have no idea about. So a couple of the programs and events that we're planning are listed on the PowerPoint, but I just wanted to explain them a little bit more. So last week, we had a group of thirteen freshmen go to Frank Lloyd Wright and West Milwaukee to do student panels with the eighth grade students to let them know what high school was really like. And we wanted to have freshmen go to this rather than seniors or juniors so that they're students who are a little bit closer in age and maybe a little bit less intimidating and they can give them a more realistic view of what next year would look like for the eighth graders. We got really good feedback from the administration at those schools who are planning on going back in the spring when the eighth graders actually know what classes they're taking and when it becomes a little bit more real for them. So in addition to that, we're working on getting some mentors who are going to be upperclassmen. So we'll be, we're having sophomores and juniors apply to be mentors to these middle school students so that they can make connections with middle school students while they're still in middle school this school year and then continue that connection on through next school year and help those ninth grader, future ninth graders with their transition into high school. So we're really excited about that. We have a lot of students who are interested and have applied already and our due date is on Wednesday. So we're going to go through and interview those students and see who's the best fit. Other things that we're really excited about is the Bulldog Nation Expo, which is the little packet that I passed out to you guys. The first page is just the sign sheet and then the second page is the actual schedule for that afternoon. So we're planning on hopefully having all of the eighth graders who will be coming to Central next year attend this expo in the afternoon. It's an exam day, so the teachers are free that afternoon to help us out. And they'll be able to talk to coaches, talk to club advisors and other program advisors, including AVID, Project Lead the Way, ART, and others so that students that are in the middle schools now can get an idea of what options they have when they're at Central next year. Like Mr. Dolmick said, like a lot of students don't know what clubs we offer, what sports we offer, and we want to make sure we're getting students that information as early as possible so they can start planning out their futures at Central and maybe picking some good clubs or sports to be a part of. So we're really, really excited about that event. So if any of you are able to make it, we'd love to see you there. Additionally, we're also hoping to have a few freshman orientation nights. We're hoping potentially to have a scheduling or an academic night for the future freshmen in February so that they can learn about the course offerings and maybe start selecting courses that would be most appropriate for them so that they can get an idea of what AP is like and what those options are, honors classes and things like that. And then we're also hoping to have another freshman orientation night in May, which of course also include parents so that students again can get more acclimated with the school, acclimated with the teachers and our administration. So we've got a lot of things in the work that works, but we're really excited about it and we're hoping to see some positive results over the next year or so.
Any questions? Comments? Dan?
Thanks, Jeff. I don't have a question, just a comment. There's a phrase that I stick with a lot of times and it, the phrase is, "If you build it, they will come." What I'm seeing tonight and hearing, seeing in front of me is, "If you show them, they will participate." And I'm happy to say that it's been a while since we have the younger people involved, but what I'm seeing is fantastic. Thank you very much.
And what else? Thank you.
Again, so I'm Renee and Christine and I are the PBIS Tier One Coaches at Central. And one great thing about the district is that there's a really strong PBIS program from the elementary schools that goes to the middle school and then continues in the high schools. But what we saw is that the PBIS works really, really well at the elementary level and then it continues to work really well at the middle school level. And it's an excellent link for the eighth graders as they come into, they come as freshmen. But the problem was that at that point, that Christine and I saw that the language needed to change for the high school level because our goal and as far as with what we're doing with AVID, as far as what we're doing with the transition program, as far as what we want to see with the C four program is college and career-ready students. So therefore, Christine and I looked at creating a matrix that was college and career-ready so that we had a common language between all teachers that was working with our high school students and using language that's college and career-ready. Instead of saying like, "Are you, do you have a pencil out?" That should no longer be a question. Instead, "Are you holding yourself accountable?" So our goal is to look at, look at, "Do we have responsible and engaged leaders at Central?" Because that's what we want everyone to graduate as.
In addition to this, our PBS team decided a couple of years ago to start what we call the Bulldog Leadership Team. And I run that along with an English teacher named Mr. Jordan. And what we do is we meet with these kids on Mondays and Fridays and they more or less run everything. They work together to organize school-wide, um, positive cultured activities. Like for example, the door decorating competition was started last year by this group and continued in this year and everyone's really excited about it. It's just, and they're organizing all the work. They're going to design the rubric. They, you know, post everything around the school. They get everyone hyped up for it. So that is just one of the things that they do. They also advise our PBIS committee and kind of give us some areas that we need to focus on as a team on how to build a better culture within Central. They actually created the We Are Bulldogs catchphrase and designed the T-shirts and really everything that we do more or less is led by them. So the student voice within PBIS is a huge piece here. They also helped us create a new, um, school-wide recognition system that they coined as Sweet Recognitions. And essentially, it's, it's kind of fun. Sweet Recognitions are a way that teachers can acknowledge their colleagues as well as their, as well as their students for being responsible, engaged or leaders within the, um, the WAC community. And what happens is they fill out a Google form, tell us how they are, how the student or colleague was responsible, engaged or leader. And those individuals get a really awesome We Are Bulldogs T-shirt. It's coveted. It's something that only a few people have in the building. And they also get a piece of candy, which is where the Sweet Recognition piece comes in. Our Bulldog Leadership Team then goes and during homeroom, delivers those on Thursdays. And the smile on the faces of the students that receive them is priceless to see. If you've ever received any Central celebrations, you maybe have seen some of the videos of kids just like being like, "Whoa, like what? I got this?" So that's something that we're really excited about as a PBIS team. It's, you know, a little bit more advanced than the ticket system that we had last year, but the kids really like it. They're really proud of their certificates. And then teachers hang those up in their classrooms as well and are very prideful of that acknowledgement. So those are just a few things that we're really excited about here.
Comments, questions, more members? Thank you so much.
So Central Celebrations is something that was started last year with me, myself, Mr. Dolnick and Mr. Klynowski. And we started that to highlight some of the many good things that are happening at Central. It was just something that I thought would be really kind of cool to send out to staff on a weekly basis. Let's have to take some pictures. Let's highlight the good things that are happening here. Because sometimes it's, you know, when you're getting caught up in your classroom work, you forget about those awesome things that are going on and that, don't actually know about them. So our goal is to really highlight things that are happening in the classroom, happening on the court or happening within the community. We now have moved that on from just going from an email to we post those things on a blog. I post that every single week and you can access that via our website. And we noticed as we were looking at some of our data recently that a lot of people are starting to look at our blog and we're really, really, really excited about that. Now people within the community get to see all the great things that are happening at Central.
One of the other parts that we did add on to Central Celebrations this year was the part about the spotlight on instruction. And we really wanted to get back to that. It's great that we're doing all these nice things, but what are we doing inside the classroom? And also showing that out to all staff that these things are happening, these things are going on and these things are doable within the classroom. Because sometimes change is difficult. Trying new strategies is hard. So we really wanted to put a spotlight on those educators that are trying new things or are just doing great things in general. We also put that spotlight on ourselves as administrators. So like when we are doing professional learning sessions, we try to uphold those same values of wickerizing those professional learning opportunities. Whether that's in Social Studies CAT or on the Professional Development Days that like we have coming up. We're just working on that performative assessment. We try to wickerize the work that we are doing as leaders as well to show that the staff, "This is also what we expect from you within the classroom." So we really wanted to shine all that, that light on, but really it's just us shining lights on stuff that's already going on. But we just want to make it transparent and clear to everybody else that these are some really great things going on to take a look. We're just shining lights on it. We're not, you know, we're helping out, but it's those other people that are being spotlighted in there. Those are the ones that are doing the hard work and that's why we wanted to shine it on them.
Before student.
I have really enjoyed your, your spotlight. I, I, I will go through it and I just love it. But I really appreciate or acknowledge that people want to be acknowledged. They want to be appreciated for the work that they do. And this does that in such a special way for both our students and your, your teachers. And I, I've been following it and I just applaud you for, for your efforts.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I agree with Sue. I sent Kent a message because I just find it so, so intriguing to watch. But it's, it's more than the Central Celebrations. The whole packet of what you're presenting to the board tonight is about branding yourself, doing the, the PR that it takes to get this community to recognize Central High School is on the map. And to me, as a former Centralite, and all my kids, all my family, we've been Central people throughout all the years. We have been so proud of that building as a building of school spirit. And you have done a wonderful job in the last year too of really reviving that and I'm really happy to see it. Thank you so much for bringing that back.
I'm just, I'm sure.
Mr. Taylor, I don't know you personally, but when I saw you last year present the West Milwaukee presentation, I think I might've said out loud, "There's our guy for Central."
Okay.
And I just want to let you know that I really respect you quite a bit without really knowing you that.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
We cast you with a very difficult task to go into a, a high school that has been branded a very tough and difficult high school. And there's no connections and, and, and I see you, the mark of a good leader is putting people in the right position. And I see you putting a lot of stars right there in the right position to do things for you and it's making you look like a star.
It's, you know, the thing, the thing is, is that I, I, we, we're a good team, you know? We're a team. And I'm, I'm no better than anybody sitting here. And that was the first thing I said. We have to work together. And my job is to give them what they need to be successful. And we're, we're an effective team. We're a great team. And I'm just honored to be a part of it. I just, I'm just trying to, you know, make sure that they have what they need to do their, do their thing. And this is just a result of it. They're amazing individuals and so it's my job to just, to let them shine and just give them, give them that go ahead and just, you know, just do it. The thing is, I think they know, um, if it doesn't work, then you try something else. I think that's the thing is that they, I have their backs no matter what, you know, to, to just keep going. And so I think that that, I know Kent and I and, and Ms. Kralik and, you know, we talked all summer about the, the plans and the Avid piece and everybody coming in, you know, I was there every day. And so most of the individuals in this room that were there all the time and really excited about the year. And so it's just a, uh, we're, we're just an effective team. That's just what it is.
So I want to say thank you and keep up the good work and thank you guys. Central really, this is the year of Central, I feel. It feels really good. It's exciting. A lot of positive vibes. So thank you guys so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just want to echo that as well. I'm, I'm in the situation where I also have a student at the school, so I get to see a lot of it firsthand. And I'm just really impressed by the strong sense of community that really seems to be being built within the school. And it's really getting, i- i- it's really building up that Bulldog pride. You can feel it kind of when you walk in the door. It's really a nice situation for you guys that you're creating for everybody.
Thank you.
I would just like to add, I'd like to thank staff members for being here because you could have handed us this. We could have read it, but it's so much more meaningful coming from the people that designed, excuse me, that designed it and implemented. And we, we can see your pride in the program and you can't see that if you just give us this or, or data.
Right, right.
That doesn't mean anything. It's what's really going on in your building. Thank you so much. Very good presentation.
I just want to say, as a bus driver out there every day, I have seen so many of you out there, which is just fantastic. Instead of poor Kent all by himself. To watch the kids go up to you and go up to Mr. Johnson and stop to talk to you and just have real conversations. You can see that they relate to you guys and I just want to thank you guys so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Have a nice holiday.
Thank you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was awesome. So thank you to West Ellis Central. Seven point three in the superintendent's report is legislative update. I'm not going to go into all of the detail that's here. I can certainly read this, but some of the things that are related to education now have been enacted into law. So we've, and we've talked about these kind of as they've come through. So the Technical Education Scholarship Program, the Alternative Education Grants, we've talked about. Some of the rules that are changing related to DPI grant programs, the, the requirements now for financial literacy in schools. We're actually ahead on this. The board not too long ago approved a new graduation requirement for high school and it includes financial literacy. And then school employee tuberculosis screening. This is a change in frequency. New employees are screened for TV and this is, I think, I forget if it's going to be annual or what the frequency is, but that's really the shift there. There was also an interesting, I, I think unintended consequence of, of the way the budget was written related to educator licensing. And so there were some changes made. So, so my license, for example, given the status that I had as a master educator flips to a lifetime license. Well, in the language, if you're not currently in a public school, so that, the language creates a problem where you can't renew your license. So that's going to be a, you know, it's going to be a technical fix in the legislation at some point, a trailer bill or some modification. That will be coming. And then the, the last big one here is the Teacher Protection Act. We've talked about this before. There's a lot of detail here that Brian's included for you. But what, the, what we're hearing about this is because there are sponsors in the Assembly but not in the Senate, that this is not likely to go anywhere at this point. So we don't think this is going to move forward. But we're still watching it. SWSA and SAA are both on record, really strongly opposing it. It came up the other day in the superintendent's meetings with CISA and just the concerns about due process problems, concerns around, you know, at the same time, we're trying to reduce identifying kids for suspension expulsion. This actually goes the wrong direction and encourages it. And so we're getting, you know, part of what we're feeding back to DPI is you're giving us conflicting messages over what some of the research is saying and what some of this legislation could potentially do. But at this point, the advice from SWSA is that it's probably not going further than its initial hearing in the Assembly. And there was nothing new since our last meeting at, on the federal level. In congratulatory resolutions, there's one. So Peyton Mako at Nathan Hale. Peyton was recognized on December 5th in the Milwaukee Journal Sentinel's Preps Plus article for his success both in the classroom and on the wrestling mat. So we've enclosed a copy for folks to review. But again, we want to congratulate Peyton as a true kind of scholar athlete. You know, that really, I think, makes us proud in so many ways. And then just for me, a couple of updates, information items. There were no public comments at our board meeting on November 27th. But a couple of things that we're working on and some of that was feedback from the board at the last meeting. So we, we do have the information about the district, the state district report card that is up on our website along with links to DPI information and the presentation that Deidre and the team gave. And we're working to do, to get similar information up on each school's website, right? So that it's available for parents at each school site. And then I've mentioned this before, but it's just a little bit of a change in our effort to communicate around the tax levy increase or the school portion of the property tax bill. We're anticipating that, you know, when the property tax bills actually come out, there'll be more attention paid.
Today.
Came out today.
Today.
They came out today. Okay. So, so we have a little blurb in the city's trifold, but we're doing a direct mailing postcard that Beth has been really working hard on with, with Mike and even Andy to make sure our information is, is accurate and is as clear as we can make it in the postcard. But we're doing that mailing directly to 30,000 homes. That's the mailing list we have through recreation. And we thought it's just worth a few dollars to push the information out as far as we can. So if people are surprised, at least there's some information in their hands to help them understand it. And then lastly, we're moving into kind of a progress monitoring part of the school year. So we're in the winter maps window and so schools will be administering winter maps. And that helps them really progress monitor how are they doing on their school improvement plan? So that, you know, our strategic plan and school improvement plan are all tied to the maps, um, targets. And then as we wrap up the first semester, so we've heard a little bit about the, and then the Central report about, you know, the final exams for the end of the semester are coming. We'll have that data and then we'll do our regular mid-year scorecard to the board. So we'll bring that, all of that. So that'll include the academic data, includes where we are in strategic plan work and then also some of the behavioral data. So attendance and suspensions and those kind of things. That we'll be updating the board late January or February. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Board President's Report. And before I get into the calendar, I just, on behalf of the board and the district, would like to extend our sympathy to four families who lost members and all members were longtime employees of our district. Dave Carson's, who was a Personnel Director for quite a long time. Irv Yaki, who was a Teacher, Principal and Director of Curriculum here. Jack Dresen, longtime West Milwaukee Principal and he actually was a WIA official. And Ron Platter, a former teacher at West Ellis Central and coach and was also a graduate of West Ellis Central. Like to extend my personal and board's condolences to those families. If you take a look at our calendar after tonight's meeting, we have a Business Services Workshop dealing with the budget calendar and then the facilities and operations. Following that, we will have a closed session meeting. Monday, December 18th, because of the holiday on the 25th, we have a regular Board of Education meeting followed by a closed session meeting. Then on Monday, December 25th, we would like to extend a Merry Christmas to all of our staff, family and constituents out there and the community. And then we come back in the new year on Monday, January 8th with a Regular Board of Education meeting followed by Business Services Workshop, which deals with 216, 217 Audit Report and Open Enrollment. All of our regular scheduled meetings are televised at six o'clock. Our workshops are not televised, but they are open to the public. Anyone have anything going on in the community that we should be aware of? Tab?
I do. I would also like to recognize since you mentioned very significant people in our district that we have lost. We also lost one of the most outstanding parent volunteers I've ever known and that's Pat Lattlick. Between our school district and what she's now doing for schools through Women's Clubs. She is just one of the most phenomenal volunteers I can ever think of in our, in our school district. And I am very sorry to see that, that we have lost her. But she has been a great mentor to the many, many parents that PTA has groomed over the years to be involved with the schools. So my condolences to their family as well.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. We have two items. Nine point one, the Approval of the Minutes from October, November 27th. And then we've separated out nine point two, the Employment Summary and Supplemental Contracts. So we'll deal first with nine point one, the Approval of the Minutes from the November 27th Regular Board Meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Those pass. We will go to nine point two, the Employment Summary and Supplemental Contracts.
Yep. And I believe it was, Bill, that you needed to recuse yourself. Is that correct? Anybody else on this one? Okay.
Okay. We're all set for that one. Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Last minute questions or comments? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. That passes eight to nothing. We'll move on to action items. Ten point one, repeal of the CPI Allocation for Teacher Compensation Plan as we had approved that on November 1st of 2016.
So we don't have Mike Weaver with us this evening. He is at home and emailed this morning, all of us saying, he made the, he made the decision to get the flu. So it's like, I said, "That's not in your job description." But yeah, he needs some time to make sure that, you know, and in the house with little kids too, and then it's going to go, you know, right through the place. So I'll start us off here with the repeal of the CPI Allocation for Teacher Compensation Plan. That was approved by the board on January 11th of 2016. And so, so just in, in high level, when the Performance Compensation Plan was approved, there was also a part of that that was the allocation or distribution of base wage or CPI increases. And so there was kind of a formula that was developed and a whole bunch of people, including teachers, administrators have worked on this. But I think, and the board received the email from Andrew. But I think, and the board received the email from Andrew after the look at what happened with a, you know, with a base wage increase of 1.26% and the way that's being distributed under that model of that formula is not exactly what I think we hoped for, right? So that when you're designing it and then you see it after a couple of years of impact. So what we think makes the most sense at this point is we simply repeal that from the Teacher Compensation Plan. And that'll gives us the flexibility to work with the teacher leadership, with the association, and each year, visit kind of what's the right way to distribute this. And we've asked the association right now to commit to the same plan for this year and next year, which is across the board for this year, 1.26%. And then next year's base wage increase would be negotiated separately. And then we would report back to the board each year exactly how that distribution is taking place. Because we want to make sure that, you know, as on, as the composition of the teaching workforce for as changes over time, does that distribution of base wage increases continue to make sense from year to year? Right? As we're younger or we get a little older and we get a little younger again, sometimes that influences the way you want to think about the way we compensate employees. But right now, we have a plan. We're in agreement with the association. But repealing it is necessary because right now, through board action, we have to distribute it according to that formula, right? So we need the board to approve repealing that to allow us to work a little more flexibly with the association.
So, and I just put up on the screen so that you guys could see it. This is what is in the teacher performance compensation model right now about how like CPI is distributed in and amongst the teachers differently. So this is what we're looking to repeal.
So Andrew, did I do it right with distributing all that?
Yeah. If you guys wish.
So in essence, if we don't pass 10.1, we can't do 10.2.
Correct. Joe, approve 10.2. We just can't distribute it.
Put the weight, okay.
Right. Across the board, 1.26 to everybody.
Can I make some comments coming from Business Services? Maybe you, Brian, have also worked on this through Human Resources. We were both looking at the email that Andrew had sent to us. And it was interesting to read it. Brian, more a new board member, myself, from when I've been here, and have kind of been perplexed by how did the wage side work versus the merit side? And Andrew did a really fine job of illustrating what the muddy waters are. And I don't think those of us that are on the board clearly understood how that CPI money was not directly with a percentage going to each individual teacher. It's actually broken down to the point that some people get next to nothing. So this just does not seem fair. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention so we could do the research to make it a better way to address the financial issues and give the teachers and party a chance to renegotiate the contract and the money for themselves.
Any other comments or questions? Move to approve?
I will be recusing myself from this.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I move.
Moved and seconded by Pat. Thank you. All in favor, we don't need a roll call on this, do we?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We'll move to 10.2, the 217, 18 Base Wage Increase for Teachers.
Yeah, so this is an annual item. This is what's negotiated, what we're still allowed to negotiate. I'll be a little sarcastic here, sorry. But it's at 1.26%. So our recommendation is that the board approves a 1.26% base wage increase. And then that would be distributed as we discussed in the previous item. The other thing I'll add here for both of these, the reason we're bringing this now is getting board approval. It allows then the administration to do the work to get all of this processed yet in December. Because that, if we were to push this into January, then we have a whole lot of extra paperwork for the business office to do because we're in different tax years for us. So that's why it's important that we are able to move this along this evening.
And this is built into the budget?
Correct.
Okay, so we're all set on that.
It's just the difference in how you allocate the funds.
I do have a question. And I apologize, I didn't read your letter, your email. So I am overload on Christmas. But I was concerned because up to now, using Act 10, the, you gave the raises of 1.6.
2.6.
To 1.26.
Or whatever the CPI is in that individual year.
And now that the CPI is going up by quite a bit, I was hoping that this wasn't going to affect, you know, being sneaky and not giving our teachers raises that go with the CPI.
Well, Act 10 says we have to do that. We don't have a choice.
And we can only go to the maximum. The maximum is the CPI. And so for this year, it's 1.26. I think next year, we're at 2%. I forget exactly as well. We're going to be. But that's the maximum that we can negotiate up to.
Right. So if the CPI is 3%, which I think it is right now, we would be, we could negotiate, the union can negotiate up to 3%.
Correct.
So I'm, okay. And I'll go home and read your email.
Any other questions?
I will be accusing myself of the justice as well.
Okay. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Last minute questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. I'd just like to say to Andrew, thank you for bringing that to our attention. We do have some upcoming workshops in the new year. But if there's anything you want to put on, and Dan, I did get your email.
Thank you.
And we'll be looking at that. Anybody have anything that pops into their head for agenda workshops?
I had mentioned many moons ago regarding looking at a pay progression system, something that we were, has been in the past and is in area districts that we could put in place for our employees here. So we'd have more of a set base of what you would get each year and working into, looking into that.
I thought we kind of directed that to Business Services to come out of committee.
Did you?
Me neither.
I know.
But that's where it should start.
I would be, pay progression you were talking about?
Yes. So it's a set system basically based on a number of variables. There's lots of different flexible ways that you can look at it. Other area districts have something similar to that. Some associated with merit, other things associated with years in service, things like that. So something that, you know, I think is a real plus for districts that do have it because teachers and other people coming into the district kind of know where they sit and where they know they can go each year.
It's more of the ladder system that we've got with us.
Yeah. The step scale, are you referring to the step scale? Is that what you're saying?
Could be a step scale. I mean, there's lots of different names for it. But there's lots of ways that it can be implemented. I understand there's a financial constraints associated with that. And that's one of the reasons why it was gotten rid of here. But it's something that I think we should look at and see the feasibility of it and see how it could be implemented in a positive way here.
We'll bring it up at our next Business Services Committee meeting.
Yeah, we'd have to cross-check that with Act 10 because that's how it used to be before Act 10.
Yes.
Well, other districts have it.
It's going to take a little investigating, so I'll have to check it out.
But I was aware, as we talked about the teacher-based wage, we were talking about the fact that there are some districts that still do have step scale. And I kind of wondered how that is possible. So I'll have Mike check it out for us.
Because it's no seniority anymore.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Okay, we'll take a look at that. Anyone else?
Yes. I understand that the Facility Committee is regrouping. And being that Andy Quome had been the head of it, now it's probably going to be Mike Weaver. But I think that we need to have an update on how that's going to be progressing.
Okay.
I would agree with the update. I don't think we need a workshop on it until they actually get working.
Probably not, just a report.
Okay, nothing else. This will end the televised portion of our meeting this evening.